Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the meeting to order. It's 6:30 on July 6th. This is the Cituate Select Board meeting. We have a forum here. We're expecting Mr. Vagnani and Ms. Karen has had a family issue, so she won't be here tonight. So if we could, um, could I have a motion to accept the agenda, please?
Sub moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Goodrich, moved by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, wrong call.
Do we have any walk-ins here tonight? I don't see anyone. Very good. Jim, our town administrators report.
Good evening. Sorry to, Mr. Goodrich said he's gonna hear almost exactly the same thing as you this morning. For the only one little exception, so. We'll start with water mains. We're still finishing up the water main construction on the utility road. That is starting to wrap up. When that's done, we'll let that settle for a little bit, then we'll be paving that area. The contractors should be out on Old Logan Bucket Road. If not, the end of this week, beginning of next week. To start installing those water mains, the pipes are there. They should be out there working again, end of this week, beginning of next week, on Old Logan Bucket. Total average demand for the past week was 1.489 million gallons per day. It's down slightly from the previous week. It's also down from the same period last year. Normally, the 4th of July, we're in the 2, 2.3, 2.4 million gallon range. So significantly lower than normal, but I think the cold, rainy, cloudy weather helped. What we've been talking about is the weather does get hot. We start seeing the manganese levels in the ponds rise, which can lead to discolored water. The abundant rainfall over the past week has lowered the manganese levels in the reservoir, so that should clear up a little bit over the next couple of days. We are expecting more rain tonight and the rest of this week, so hopefully those manganese levels will stay low. We are gonna continue to monitor usage. Right now, we have ample water supply. We're at plus 8.25 at the reservoir. We had four and a half inches of rain in the last week. But if we do get up into the 2 million plus every day, that does put a lot of pressure on our plant, and we will start seeing brown water again, because they can't treat the manganese at that level north of the plant. So we'll continue to monitor it, and if need be, we will put on additional water restrictions at some point in the future. Real quick, most people know that COVID restrictions have been lifted, so we are back here, meeting live. We are working with Seth to make it so that we can have live meetings and have people participate remotely by Zoom. Our original goal date for that was August 1st. That was when the governor was gonna lift all the restrictions. We then changed that to May, and we kinda got cut short. But Seth has got that equipment ordered. It'll be coming in, we'll be testing it, and then the board will have to make a decision whether they want to amend our remote participation policy, which at present time does not allow remote participation by people outside, only people who participate in the meeting. So we'll have to take a look at that when the time comes. In our own last two weeks, we've had two new cases, none last week, two the week before. We are still in the gray. Positivity rating over the last 14 days is .33%. It's up from .11 two weeks ago, but it's still in the ballpark. The state is .38, so we're kinda trending exactly where the state is. If you have not gotten vaccinated, we ask that you do so. The Delta variant is very contagious. It is being seen more in the younger population, so we would ask that you do get vaccinated if you have not. If you need an inducement, again, at the rate of costing myself money, Vaccimillions, if you have been vaccinated, you can sign up for Vaccimillions. Right now, about 700,000 people have signed up, so your chances of winning a million dollars in the first round or winning $700,000 is better than scratching, so.
And it's easy.
Please don't. I'd rather win the money myself, I just want to earn any income cost, so. Anybody who doesn't play would be great.
It just takes one minute to do it.
It's really very, very simple, and you just check at the end that you're testing that you're vaccinated, and if you do win, you have to show proof that you've been vaccinated. It literally takes two minutes to do it. Peggy's Beach Parking Lot, we're still ongoing down there. We have the base coat down. We've had some drainage problems that we've seen down there, so we'll be putting in some drainage in that parking lot to handle those drainage problems. We'll keep monitoring that with the paving company to see if we can get the paving company in to finish. Otherwise, if we get too late into the season, we'll put it off to the end of the year. It is temporarily stripped. We moved the handicap spots to the other side of the parking lot, onto the new pavement, so we're gonna keep working on that, but right now, we're gonna put the drainage in to control some of the drainage problems that we're having down at the parking lot. Countryway Sidewalk is underway. If you get down there, you'll see they're banging away at the curbing. That's going very well. They will start paving shortly, put down a base coat. You will see in some places some poles and things that you think are in the way. If they're in the way, we will move them. They're just putting down the sidewalk and things now, but that is ongoing. As soon as we finish that sidewalk, we'll start working on the Stockbridge Road from Stockbridge Landing from Green Bush heading out towards Countryway at First Parish. So that'll come up next. The Countryway Sidewalk is funded by a $400,000 Complete Streets grant, plus some money from the Towns Road and Sidewalk budget. Steven, the raking renovation should commence within two weeks. The next two weeks, there will be recreation programs in there. After that, the contractor will be mobilizing and taking ownership of that. It is scheduled to be finished in early September, so it shouldn't interfere with school at all. There will be some disruption. Obviously, the rake will be closed, and as will part of the skate park when they're working. That was funded through the community preservation grant, and we will be working on that again, starting probably the 15th, we'll see mobilization. Well 17A, the green sand filter is progressing. The building's up, moving along with the installation of the filter and all the plumbing and stuff inside. The green sand filters, for people that don't recall, remove the iron and manganese from the water before it gets into the system. They are two of the biggest causes of brown water in our water system. So there are two components. One, we have to clean the sediment out of the pipes that's been there for ages, which is what we're doing with the flushing. And two, to remove that contaminant from going into the system in the future. That's what the green sand filter does, it takes out the iron and manganese. That is scheduled to be done in the fall. We are hoping to have it online sooner, and once that comes back online, it'll put about 250,000 gallons per day back into the system for use, clean, clear, with no iron and no manganese. So that'll be a very big improvement to us in our system and our water quality forward. At the same time, we're working on Well 18B, which is up next to the landfill in the Widow's Walk. Right now, we have a contract out that will pipe the wastewater from Well 18B over to the dolphins for the nation irrigation. Those filters need to be back flushed regularly, depending upon how often using that well. That water will be pumped over instead of sending it to waste and sending it to the treatment plant, we'll pump it over the dolphins, and we'll be able to use that on the nation fairways. 10,000-plus gallons a day, again, depending upon how much we're using Well 18B going forward. The clubhouse expansion is also ongoing. It's gonna expand the clubhouse, new kitchen, new handicap accessibility, as well as a new pro shop and a new parking lot. A $2.5 million project, just from the two town meetings. It is expected to be done in the fall. Right now, we are on schedule and on budget with that project. One quick addition from this morning. We had a call with the MBTA today on the ferry restoration service. We were asked to announce that Boston Harbor Cruises is looking for people. They are hiring as they're ramping back up, so they're having a virtual job fair tomorrow from 9:00 to 4:00. And we will put the link on our website, so people who are looking, looking for full-time, part-time crews, people working in the ferry buildings, things like that, as they start to ramp back up to the normal operation. So people who are looking, who are full of part-time work, Boston Harbor Cruises will be having a virtual job fair tomorrow from 9:00 to 4:00.
Good news.
Yeah, I just had a question. So on the sidewalks on Countryway, so you're gonna move the poles that are in the middle of the sidewalk out of the way?
On the new part, yes.
You are?
Yeah. The ones that are in the way impacting handicap accessibility will be moved, yes.
So there's a number of them are right in the middle of the sidewalk, and we didn't move them for the first part?
We have a series of poles that will be moved for this sidewalk.
Great.
I'll have to figure which ones exactly are, Tony. They're not all getting moved, but some of them are getting moved.
Okay. Good.
Is that possible? Do they say that possible for poles, and you can't move them all the way out, but they'll be in up distance for real charitable communities, but they still could potentially be poles that are in the sidewalk?
So the, what is it, 48 inches?
I believe so. In some sections, you can get down to 36 inches, but they'll be in up to 30 inches.
Okay, so you're only gonna move them if they don't meet the...
If we can move every pole, we will, we'll slide every pole, it just depends how much we can do.
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot of work. There's probably four poles in a row that are right in the middle.
Some of the poles they're not gonna be able to move, because there's gonna be too much tension with poles or transformers, some other reason why they can't move it. But we'll work with them the best we can, but we'll...
So National Grid's gonna come in and actually move poles?
That's our plan, and that's what we're working tomorrow. Yes, so.
He said yes.
We might, meanwhile, we might have base course down there, leave it for once until we put the final code on, until we move the poles, but that's, that's what we'll evaluate.
Okay.
Well, speaking of sidewalks, just a question. Has Stockbridge Road been designed already, or is that yet to be done? The new part of it?
It's about deliberative design. It is final design, it's not yet ready.
Right.
It's very preliminary stage, if anything, I believe. Sean was working on something, but we're not that, not that far from it.
Well, I would like to see it. I don't know about the rest of the board, but I'd like to see that when it's designed, because I just walked down there a month ago with a couple of neighbors, and man, there's some tough spots down there. So I don't know exactly how you're gonna move houses or what, but, so.
Can we try not to move houses?
Yeah, but there's a couple of situations where...
All we do is put the sidewalk right through.
Right through the, yeah, on top of it, yeah.
But we're having problems because the property lines are so tight.
Yeah, they're very tight.
And there's also some iron squads that we really have to cut out from the side. Our pole up now is, there is one tree, we're waiting for National Grid to take down. Our guys can't take it because it's too close to the poles, so we're waiting for them to come down and take that tree down, get it below the electric lines, and then we'll take the rest of the tree down.
And that's Countryway?
That's our countryway.
But I'm talking about Stockbridge. And you've got wetlands on one side, and you've got...
That's gonna be real tricky.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Karen?
Just a quick question on Widow's Walk. What did you say the total budget was? You said it?
$1.5 million.
Okay. I just didn't recall it, because I know we did it in two chunks. That includes the park...
1.8 and then 700.
And that was the parking lot piece. Okay, thank you. I just needed clarification on that. That's it.
Mr. Goodrich?
I'm fine, okay.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience have any questions? Nope? All right, let's move on. Discuss vote, one-day malt and liquor licenses, Malany's at Allen Place. Joe Norton, or as my husband calls him, Joby. Would you like to tell us what you're looking for?
Yeah, so I have a wine beer license, off license now. I'm looking to do a lot of private, private bodies, so looking at private bodies upstairs, give a certain line there, entire alcohol, so I'm here with the director of the house.
And the dates are July 10th and July 17th? Does the board have any questions?
Just one question about, and I did have a chance to ask Mr. Norton ahead of time. So his license for, I won't get the right words. His operating license is for retail and the beer and wine, retail, basically. So, but there's no prohibition for him having his special event under his, either, I'm looking at...
He's going to use that property for public special events, as he said he's going to get it up. So we're really sure we have the public and shares. It's tip certification.
Right.
So they can serve it up on their business.
Okay, which was provided.
So we're just trying to inform the board to what it would like to do going forward. And then rather than having to be in this same time, if it's okay with you, we'll add it to the end with a one-day wine and malt program. Except instead of, of such a maritime site, we'll do what we do for the local, you know, for Malany's special event, like we do for like the event special for a car park.
Great, and we did get that backup information in this package, though. Okay, great. It's a great facility. Would you like a motion? Are there any questions?
I'll just make a real quick comment. That space is spectacular. What you did with that building, Joby, is phenomenal. It is pristine. It's a full chef kitchen in there. He's got, obviously, great seafood, but other foods in there as well, so you're gonna do great there. I mean, it just knocks it out of the park, and the views are spectacular, so I think it's a great addition to the town.
All right.
Stole my thunder. Subway tile, everything when you go there, it is, it's fabulous, and I hope this is just one of many, because people from not just, all around the whole South Shore are gonna just fall in love with that, so really appreciate it.
Erica, do I hear a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license, beverage license for Malany's Fish Market at 8 Allen Place for a private event on July 10th, 2021, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., and also for a private event on July 17th, 2021, from 7:00 until 10:00 p.m.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vagnani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. You have another motion?
I combine them.
You combine them. Thank you. All right. Next, we have Lisa Reynolds, the Inn at Cituate Harbor, for an outdoor entertainment permit on July 14th, 2021, from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. Lisa here?
Lisa lives in California.
Oh.
So she won't be present this evening.
Oh.
We can't have her move the car.
Okay.
So we have all the information, the host special, and helping with Cituate Harbor.
So this is a cappella vocalist and acoustic guitar on the patio outside of Cituate Harbor, Inn at Cituate Harbor.
Does anyone have any questions? Comments, anyone in the audience, anybody? No? All right. Do I hear a motion?
It's acoustic, so that's...
It's acoustic, and the neighbors know about it.
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Lisa Reynolds, who is hosting an event at the Inn at Cituate Harbor on July 14th, 2021, from 5:00 p.m. until 7:30 p.m.
Second? Motion by Mr. Goodrich, second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And next, we have an outdoor entertainment permit for Elizabeth and David Dupree, 21 Heritage Trail. They're hosting a neighborhood party on July 24th from 5:30 to 10:00. And the Doc Ellis Band will provide live music and is scheduled to end at 10:00 p.m. Butters have been notified. Yes?
Yes.
That's you. Where Elizabeth? Do I understand you're leaving?
We are.
Where are you going?
We're going to Virginia.
Virginia? Oh, well, we're sorry to lose you.
We're very sorry to go.
But it's very nice you're having a party to say goodbye.
Say goodbye.
Does anyone have any questions?
The only question I have is, obviously, you got a great band. They have a send-off, but they have a great following. So is this in your yard?
It's in our backyard.
In your backyard?
We have a, we're on a five pole set on the left, so it's, it's a little bit difficult to, you might have a lawn or anything.
Right, and you're not gonna people parking? I mean, it's mostly...
Well, we have people, there are people that are around there, there probably would be people parking, but I've already talked with all my neighbors about people parking in front of their houses, and nobody seems to have a problem. I don't think there's gonna be an issue.
I think we might have to inspect it, though.
She wants an imitation.
Okay, great. It's, yeah, they just have such a big following.
Well, and you invited all the butterses, I believe.
Yeah, they're all invited, and, yeah, they're all offering space and whatever.
That's great.
Well, best wishes on your move.
Thank you.
Any more questions, anybody?
Just need to make sure there's access of public safety vehicles getting up and down the street, just in case.
Oh, of course. I mean, I have a feeling that there's gonna be kids as well, and we could have a baseball or a football set, so we have to, okay, so then, so.
Okay.
You could be, you could be watching.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
Sure. Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Elizabeth and Dave Dupree at 21 Heritage Trail Cituate, who will be hosting a neighborhood party on July 24th, 2021, from 5:30 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. The Doc Ellis Band will provide live music and is scheduled to end 10:00 p.m.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Okay. Next is an outdoor entertainment permit, Jean Rubino, for August 21st, 2021, at 60, well, she lives at 60 Turner Road, and she's hosting her 70th birthday at the Inn at Cituate Harbor.
Thank you.
You don't look it.
Thank you.
And the party is going to be from 6:00 p.m. until 9:30. An acoustic guitar player will provide live music, with the event scheduled to end at 9:30. Butters have been notified. So, anything you wanna add, other than...
No.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
In advance.
Surprise, don't tell me.
No, we won't tell you. We especially won't tell you.
I could throw my own...
Anyone have any questions?
No.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Would you like a motion?
I would like a motion.
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Jean Rubino from 60 Turner Road, who is hosting her 70th birthday at the Inn at Cituate Harbor on August 21st, 2021, from 6:00 until 9:30 p.m. An acoustic guitar player will provide live music, with the event scheduled to end at 9:30 p.m.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vagnani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. You're good to go.
Happy birthday.
You're welcome. You're safe, the whole media. The next is an outdoor entertainment permit for Jen Murphy Good for the Roots Boutique. Would you like to tell us about?
It's Good Roots Boutique, it's in North Cituate, and it's basically just pop-up hours for the 6th of the day, July 16th, and I just wanted to offer some live music. He's a Cituate resident, so he's well operated.
Sounds like fun. Anyone have any questions about that? Wish you well. Do I hear a motion?
Move to... Go ahead. You have the voice for radio. Oh, sorry.
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Jen Murphy of Good Roots Boutique at 763 Countryway, who is hosting an event on Friday, July 16th, 2021, from 4:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. A vocalist acoustic will be, will provide live entertainment, which is scheduled to end at 6:00 p.m.
Do I hear a second?
Pending a butter notification. Is that enough time, Jen?
It is. I've talked to everybody, but I know that there's an application I have to get from Michelle. Okay. You are my patient, so it, I was emailing with Michelle right before the holiday, so yes, I've talked to everyone, but I know I have to fill out a form.
Well, I was just seeing, the music's ending at 6:00, but the event ends at 6:00, too. I didn't know if you needed some time to clean up and...
Is it 1:00 or 4:00? Oh, oh, I see what you mean. Yeah, maybe, you know, not too much time. You mean, put it at 6:30?
Did you wanna go 4:00 to 7:00 or something?
6:30.
Okay. So I'll amend that to be, which is scheduled from 4:00 p.m. until 6:30 p.m.
Seconded?
Second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. And now we're to our board and committee appointments. We do have an employee opening on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, and I understand that Jim Sichiger has applied for. Would you like to come up? The employee opening?
I guess, thank you very much.
Greetings. So, would you like to tell us about yourself? Are you new to town?
Uh, well, I guess, well, four years.
I know, I was new before, so I'm like, no. Four years is not new anymore.
Yeah, sorta new, yeah.
So, well, about yourself, first of all.
Sure. So came in as a firefighter paramedic from private EMS about four years ago. Was prior to here, I was working at Brewster Ambulance Services as a paramedic, and then prior to that, I was working at Cataldo Ambulance Services as a paramedic and EMT, and prior to that, I was in the nightclub business. I was a manager slash supervisor for security, and, and I guess, yeah, that's, basically, I was just basically nightclubs and, you know, entertainment and hotels and stuff like that, sort of bounced from job to job when I was in my twenties into my thirties and stuff like that. I got my EMT in 2006, and then I became a paramedic in 2012. Was living in Quincy for about 20 some odd years prior to coming here, and I guess one day I decided to push myself to get out, you know, I was comfortable in private EMS, but you know, I think everybody was telling me about, you know, how it was, you're trying to recruit me, trying to recruit me for a long time, and eventually I end up taking the big plunge, and now I'm here. Let's see, so I was born in New York, Brooklyn, raised in Carolina by my grandparents for, since, till I was about 15, and then I came up here in Boston. I want to say in 87, I was about, I want to say I was 15 years old, just transitioning from preschool, middle school to high school. Went to high school in West Roxbury High with David Bordolato, which is one of our lieutenants here at Cituate Fire Department. Also went to UMass Lowell briefly, dropped out, worked in nightclubs and just stayed in there in the entertainment business from there until my early 30s. And, you know, I had my first child when I was 20, I think I was 28, and then my second one when I was 30, and we were doing pretty well, and then my wife got baby fever at 40, and then I had my third child.
Oh, God bless.
So at 40 years old, I had another one. Yeah.
Well, you know more when you're 40.
Out of that, that's it. Three is enough. But other than that, that's a, basically a quick blurb about me. I, I'm a medic, you know, through and through. I like paramedicine, I like the medical part of it. I do like firefighting, too, but, you know, like I said, I'm really here, I'm really a medic. Firefighting's not something I would avoid, but at the same time, you know, that's what we do here. We are a medic-based system that does fire-related stuff, as opposed to, you know, contrary to our proper belief that we are a fire-based system that does matter stuff, but we're not. We're, you know, 90% of our calls are in paramedicine. That's what we do. That's what I am, you know, you know, and the new guys, the new guard is like that. You know, and the new guys, the new guard is like that. I think the older guys are still war resistant to that, and, you know, conflict of, uh, culture, but it is what it is.
Very good.
But we won't come out of that.
Would you like to start, any questions?
Sure, just a simple one. What, why do you want to get involved in this committee, and what do you think you can add to it?
Well, um, the chief and, um, Bob from HR talked me about it, they explained things about it, and it sounded pretty interesting. I wasn't aware of it at first, uh, you know, had no idea. But, you know, I think if I could give a unique perspective on my end of what, you know, how it is to be a minority or a perspective of a minority maybe not used to, then I think that could help. I don't know how the average person who's a minority lives here and what they would think or how they feel or whatever, but, you know, coming from, you know, the deep south, from Carolina, coming up to the, you know, the city of Boston, living in the city of Boston, and then eventually meeting my ex-wife and marrying her and living in Quincy for twenty some odd years. I mean, I guess I can give you a little perspective. You know, we're all living in the same climate, we're all living in this country, so, and Massachusetts. And I think that, you know, maybe I can offer something that, you know, you could take home, you know, and go. I mean, cause, um, ultimately, you know, we as people of color, we're not monolith, we don't think the same way. Everybody has their own flavor, everybody has their own life, um, uh, story that will color their opinion.
Well, I think you're selling yourself a little short, because I think you also work in the town, which gives you a perspective that we're really looking for also.
Yes.
You know, it's, um, unfortunately, we can't change the world, but we can really focus on what in Citewood we can do better. So you get, you get a really good perspective by being an employee here as well, so I-
Well, I hope so.
Yeah, I think you'd be a, a very good addition to the committee.
Yeah, me too.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes, so, nice to see you.
Likewise.
Time does fly, I would have said, always only been here two years, but. As Tony alluded to, so this committee, the charge, I'm sure you had a chance to look at the charge, is looking at how the town does business, how do we interact with residents with each other, and to find ways that we may be able to improve upon that with a lens of diversity and equity. And the group has been together now almost a year, like, quite a while. And they're, it's a great group. I don't know if you've had a chance to watch any of the meetings, but, um, very committed, dedicated group that, um, is, has, has, um, really taken the ball pretty far, but now they're ready to start making recommendations.
Yep.
So I personally, the fact that you're in the fires department and that you've been here for, you know, four years, so you've kind of got the lay of the land, um, and then, as you said, your new perspective, I think, would be amazing. And, and you're just always so nice to talk to, so I'm sure that you fit right in.
Thank you.
Did you have any questions about, um, where they are in the process, or had a chance to talk to anyone on the committee yet?
Uh, not yet, but I know there's a meeting next week, right? And I think-
They meet every other week, is that, that's the other question?
I think that I can, like, you know, once we get together, I can, you know, hear people's, uh, take on everything and then take it from there, you know, sort of absorb as much as I can, because I'm still sort of like figuring it out, for the most part.
Yeah, and one last question, Pam? Is your schedule, so it is, they do meet every two weeks?
Yeah.
So, and the evening?
And my chief is very accommodating. He pretty much, you know, helped me set, set this up where if I'm working, that he, I will have that time off. So that's a guarantee. And any day I'm not working, then I'll, it'll be a guarantee I'm here, and I won't schedule any vacations on the time zones I'm supposed to be here.
Okay, great.
Mr. Andrew?
These are much more fun in person than over Zoom.
Yes.
Of who people are and, uh, your philosophy, your outlook, I just get a real great sense.
Thank you, girl. I appreciate it.
Just wonderful. I guess, just kind of thinking back, I mean, do you, do you have any concerns or things that maybe?
I mean, like I said, um, I don't think there would be concerns or anything, it's just, I think, me coming in and just absorbing what's going on and then, you know, see, you know, seeing the lay of the land here and how things are done, and then, you know, putting my input in. You know, I was told my chief that, you know, whatever I, you know, say, just, you know, be honest about it and, you know, take it from there and see how people react to it. But, uh, you know, I mean, like I said, I mean, we all have our own perspectives and, you know, it's good to hear from what everybody has to offer, and then from there, we can take it and, you know, see if we can sort of merge it in together and make something, you know, stick.
Well, FYI, the last meeting is on Citewood Community YouTube, if you want to take a look at it.
Okay.
The last diversity meeting, and it was quite interesting, so.
And YouTube, it's Citewood Community Meeting?
Citewood Community TV, so you may have to watch it down at the fire station, I don't know. So, at any rate, do you have any more questions for us, or?
No.
All right, well, we will vote on this later this evening.
Sure.
So you're welcome to stay with us.
I will stay.
We always invite you to stay, but if they would like to leave, we totally understand.
I got, I'm off, I'm like, I got nowhere to go, so.
You can always call Lorraine tomorrow, also.
I'll get to you in the morning, see you around.
I am, I'll make sure I'm scheduled tomorrow. Sounds good. Yeah, she would beg to do it.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, boss, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Goodnight. So, we are interdepartmental transfers. Nancy Holt?
And Mr. Kelly.
Oh, yes, Mr. Kelly, how are you? Want to come up? Good. Did I sound like that? Yes, I did. Come right up, Nancy.
Nancy doesn't want to be associated with us.
She loves the advisory committee.
So, at the board's June 22nd meeting, they took a vote for year-end transfers, including a transfer from the contributory health insurance line item to OPEB liability. And the board decided in its wisdom to reduce the transfer, recommended transfer from two hundred six thousand to a hundred thousand dollars. At the June 28th advisory committee member, uh, meeting, the advisory committee members voted five-zero against a hundred thousand dollar recommendation and five-zero in favor of returning back to the two hundred six thousand dollar recommendation. And Chair Kelly is here to explain their rationale for that vote.
I don't think we found it terribly surprising. We know how the advisory board feels about OPEB and our other pension obligations, so.
I, um, first off, pardon me, thank you for allowing me to address the select board. Thank you for all that you do, what we do fails in comparison to what you do. I'm here tonight because of item number one of the fiscal 2021 year-end transfers, and that was the recommended transfer from the contributory group insurance to the OPEB liability in the amount of two hundred six thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars. The select board approves that in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. For those people who choose to watch this, that don't understand what OPEB is, OPEB is other, pardon me, it's other post-retirement employee benefits. What does that mean? That's retiree healthcare. Everybody is focused upon the funding of the pension because the rating agencies and SMP have looked at your, uh, your pension funding, funding amount. OPEB is relatively new to SMP's consciousness. In Citewood, we're treating OPEB the way many other cities and towns around the state are, and that's as, on a pay-as-you-go basis. We're about ninety-eight percent underfunded, I believe, or two percent funded. Stated otherwise, we're kicking McCann down the road. This liability is not going to go away. You've got a smaller active base of employees, and you've got a larger retiree group that's enjoying the benefit of OPEB. Citewood is not different than many of the state's cities and towns. We're probably at the lower end of the funding. Wellesley is a hundred percent funded, but we don't have Route 128 running through our town. We don't have huge office parks and industrial base. We don't have a town of wash and cash that decided to have a, um, a citizen's petition at their town meeting to fully fund their OPEB liability. SMP, to this point, has not considered OPEB in assigning our double A minus rating? Double A plus rating, sorry. However, GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board, back in 2015 passed, um, Statements Number 74 and 75 to address the financial reporting for post-employment benefit plans other than pension plans. They have not yet implemented that, but when they do, that liability is going to come on to the town balance sheet. And it could potentially impact our SMP rating. I think that whenever we have the opportunity to make some progress towards funding this OPEB liability, we should do that. And the advisory committee, uh, discussed this at length, and then unanimously, by a vote of five to nothing, recommended that we remain with the fiscal year-end 2021 transfer in the amount, uh, to the OPEB liability in the amount of two hundred six thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars. So that's why I'm here tonight.
Well, thank you for coming. We know how hard the advisory board works and how seriously they take all the issues, this issue especially. So I wasn't terribly surprised when I heard you guys disagreed with what we had voted on. So, with that, do you have any questions, Tony, for Jerry or Nancy?
I don't have any questions, I mean, um-
Or comments?
Yeah, I mean, if you watched our meeting, we discussed why we did it. It's a drop in the bucket, so we're going to throw another drop in there. You know, the only time it makes any impact is when the pension gets fully funded, when we start putting millions of dollars a year in there. And as you know, when does OPEB start? Maybe six, seven years ago? Right, so, before then, it was all as we're doing it right now, you know, pay-as-you-go type stuff, so.
But the liability preceded that, correct?
The liability was huge from day one.
Yes.
Clearly. And with people retiring at an earlier age, it's only going to get larger, as you stated a moment ago. So, our thought was, if there's any way we can put that money, it would have a more, it potentially could have a bigger impact on doing something good for the town right now than just throwing another drop in the bucket for OPEB. We don't believe it's going to impact our, our bond rating, because we're already at double A plus, and I think it'd be really hard to get to triple A, just in general. The sense is that that's not going to throw it one way or the other. But, you know, it's, there's no right or wrong answer. It's just, our, our sense was, if we could take a hundred thousand dollars and put it into our water system or something like that, that it would have more of an impact for, you know, for the citizens than throwing another hundred thousand dollars into OPEB.
Yeah, I don't think two hundred six thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars into OPEB is going to improve the town's credit ratings. I think, however, by turning our back on OPEB over and over and over again, it could have the opposite effect.
Well, I'd have to disagree with you turning our back on it. We're not, we're putting half of the amount, so it's not two hundred thousand six or zero, and we've put money in every single year. And we have guidelines as to how much we're supposed to put in there, and we've hit those guidelines every year. So, we're certainly not turning our backs on it, but, um, you know, this is just, Nancy suggested one number, we suggested another number, and that's where we fell.
And the advisory committee felt that Nancy's number was more appropriate.
I was on there for six years, I get it.
Yeah, I think Tony covered it, I, I, we discussed it at our meeting, and the appreciable difference of, uh, if we're going to make an impact on the OPEB, it's going to take more than a hundred thousand dollars to move the needle. And as Tony said, that as a board collectively, we felt that we could use that money better in other areas right now. So, I'm afraid I have not been persuaded otherwise.
No, I understand, nor have we.
Duly noted.
Yeah, I think I might have a little bit different take than my colleagues. But, because I do, I do worry about OPEB, and I think even if it's a small contribution, it's going to help in the long run. I will say, um, what also concerns me would be deferred maintenance on issues. And so when I was thinking of the hundred thousand, I was thinking of, um, you know, disability access at Egypt Beach, Sand Hills access, which is not there, the bandstand that's broken that we need to fix, the parking lot of the town forest, solar panels that aren't on, um, some buildings that we need. We need to paint town hall. Front street for disability, there's, there's so many issues of us pushing, and if there's any sort of kind of compromise, I mean, I'll just say that I'm a half loaf type person, and if there's a hundred thousand for OPEB, it made my day. And if there's a hundred thousand for deferred maintenance cost to get some of these projects done, that's fabulous, too. And if it's a solar panel, it's, um, that's going to save us forty, fifty thousand dollars a year, great. Then maybe we can use a portion of that for OPEB down, down the road that's there. But, um, I do, I mean, I, I share your, your fear. I mean, unfunded pension liabilities writ large around the nation is close to six trillion dollars, as we know. I mean, it's, uh, it's frightening to see, but I think we are going to address it, and I'm with you, anytime we can get a hundred thousand, I'll, I'll take it. But, thank you for, for still bringing it up and, and not, um-
I certainly don't recommend that you continue to defer maintenance. However, um, I'm a big proponent of starting to make bigger contributions to OPEB, knowing that maybe we'll be at a three percent funding level. The reality is, with the performance of the Plymouth County retirement system, we're not going to get to a fully funded pension plan as soon as we'd like to. So I've articulated the concerns of the advisory committee. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to address them. I cannot address the economics of solar panels, nor the compliance with, um, the handicap laws that we have that we're in violation of.
Tony, just a quick question, Nancy, this is additional money going to OPEB, right? We already, we already put in what our financial guidelines say in our budget. This is just extra money to go into there.
I'm right. Any other questions? Anyone from the audience? Pam, don't want to ask a questionnaire?
It's, it's a difficult situation.
Yeah, it is.
There's no, I mean, somebody leaves, is your P and L supposed to take a hit for four hundred thousand dollars? Because that person leaves on July 1st, you know, 2021, essentially, that's what they want you to do. And it's, it's no way to run a business. You know, initially, they were just telling us that to be aware of it, you know, and it was, it was fifty-five or sixty-five million dollars way back when, and that was shocking. And now it's, you know, more than that. Yeah, double that. So, um, it's, it's a great benefit to the employees, and it's hard to account for it.
Just so, um, the advisory committee and the select board can assume where we're at right now, the two boards have to agree for there to be any transfer. So if the board decides to take no cha, to make no change to their existing vote that's on record, the advisory committee either has to call another meeting to consider the hundred thousand dollars again, or then we don't transfer whatsoever. And then we just, it pulls out the free cash and we can deal with it at another time.
Can you run that time one more time?
So since the select board and the advisory committee vote at different amounts, there is no transfer that can move forward unless one board or the other comes on-
Changes.
Changes. So it, it, it hasn't happened to us before, it's not a crisis situation. Just so that both, um, boards understand.
Is that in the financial policies? Excuse me, sorry. Is that in financial policies?
No, that's in the statute.
They have state.
State statute, oh, okay.
requires that both of you-
That's why I didn't read that.
Have to vote in agreement. Like I said, it's not, it's not a crisis, it would be, if the select board decided not to change its vote, it would be up to the advisory committee whether or not they want to go to another meeting or just let it go.
And if they let it go?
They'll pull out the free cash.
The entire amount? So we will not be contributing anything extra to OPEB? If, if we don't come out of an agreement.
Thank you for that information. I'm not inclined to make a change.
So, do I have a motion, or?
I don't think there's a motion.
Only if we were to re-vote it, revisit.
So just for clarity, so if they do hold another meeting, but it's still a no, it would just goes to free cash?
Correct. If they hold another meeting and it's a no, or they do not choose to hold a meeting by July 15th, it just goes, closes to free cash.
So to be clear, we've already satisfied our obligation. So this is over and above that. So I don't want anyone out there to think we're not doing what we should do and must do. We are choosing to either add extra or not, if the advisory board doesn't vote. All right. Well, if I don't, if I don't hear a motion, I guess what I'm, do we have a vote, or?
We already voted.
We already voted.
All right, so there's no motion here?
So it sounds like we're not inclined to change our position.
Okay.
We really appreciate the advisory committee's opinion, and appreciate your taking the time to come in tonight to explain it to us. And I think we're sensitive to it, but, um, at this point, we are where we are.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, and we hope that you guys reconvene and, and vote the hundred thousand dollars instead of the zero going down.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
All right. So now we have inter-fund borrowing with Pam Abitadli, our treasurer-collector.
Let's Pam up.
Sure. Hello, Pam.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm well, thank you, how are you?
We're good, thank you.
Happy FY22.
That's right. It's FY22, we didn't have a cake or anything.
No. All right, so I'm here for an inter-fund borrowing, as you said, for four million four hundred fifty-four thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. The first project, um, we'd like to do a borrow, inter-fund borrowing for is the Cushing Highway Land Acquisition Project, one million three hundred and fifty thousand. The second one is the Cedar Point Betterment. We'd like to borrow two hundred thousand from that project. I got an update from the project manager, Will Brandon, today, and it's moved along into the wrap-up phase. All the sewer main lines in the street and all private sewer lines to the buildings have been replaced with new services. Some site restorations remain to be completed throughout the summer, and final paving will occur in the fall. I know Jim updated you on that, too. I don't know, I meant to ask Nancy before this, but we did receive a nine hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant for this project from Mass Clean Water Trust, from Mass Work, grant came in, um, last week. The second, uh, the third project we'd like to borrow is for the sewer facility plant, the six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. the third project we'd like to borrow is for the sewer facility plant, the $660,000. This is, project is still in the conceptual phase. The RFP is still being drafted, but Will feels as though they're considering the opportunities to get this as a fast-moving project. So he said it should move right along as soon as he gets the RFP going.
Wait, do we, did we not vote that? The facility plan for the sewer? Didn't we decide not to do that?
No. It was April of 2021 voted.
Did we just have a discussion about that, where we thought that we were questioning whether we should spend $700,000 to get a plan together for the sewer treatment plant?
Well, I think we asked for some backup information, if I recall.
We got an email.
I think, Lorraine, you sent us something, didn't you?
Yeah.
So we all feel that we should spend $700,000 on a, a plan for the sewer? I guess we never, we asked for the information, but we never talked about it again?
Will says he's waiting for a new permit in drafting the RFP. That's what I got today when I asked for the update.
So at the risk of jumping off this cliff myself, I didn't read the email. I didn't read the backup. And if someone here did and has any questions, I would appreciate them asking it.
Yeah.
But if we got the email with the information we asked for and we didn't read it, if we want to, I suppose we could put this approval off. Could we, Pam?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. Nancy's, Nancy's the one that asked me to ask for all these. So I, and I then, because she asked me, I then reached out to the project managers or the head, department heads, so I could get a feel of what's going on also, because I don't go to every single meeting here. Like Nancy's well aware of all these projects, I'm not. So I try to meet with the heads, department heads, before I come in front of you, so if you have any questions. But the facility plan, I have a big paragraph here from Will. Do you want me to read it to you?
Yes.
Okay. "This project is still in the conceptual phase, and RFP has not yet been drafted. We have been operating off an approved continuance of our permit and have not heard back from our regulators on what will be required in the new permit. The requirements sent forth in the new permit will largely drive the scope of the facility plan as we anticipate some upgrades will be needed to meet compliance of the new permit. Along with preparing for the new permit, it is our goal to achieve a plan for the equipment and structures on site which are reaching end of useful life, and how to best replace and restore those items to maintain and improve the process. We are currently considering scope of the RFP for the plan while weighing which components of the facility plan or plant upgrades might qualify for grants and other opportunities."
So, based on that, do we need more specific information? Is that, is that what we were asking for?
Can I just add to that, just to remind the board from the capital backup, the capital project submission from the original one? The department says, "This project would be in lieu of the previously requested assessment of the water, wastewater treatment plant. Planning will reduce overall long-term costs, and the sewer division navigates the transition to a new permit, compliance with copper and inflow and infiltration issues, and maintaining existing or expanding services." So their explanation for the original application was that it was a very necessary tool, both for permitting and for lowering long-term costs. And Kevin, what, oh, there's Kevin.
So.
The full review, correct?
Yeah, this is soup to nut.
Yeah, this is the full review.
I came in late, I didn't catch.
That's right. There's, there's been a question about the amount of money that we're, you're requesting for the sewer treatment pant, plant study. And we had asked at the last meeting, we had to get more specifics. And I just admitted that I got the email, and I didn't know if me attached one, so I didn't read it. That's my fault. But I don't know if there was more specific information in that email that would answer some of the questions. But secondarily, I would ask if, if we were to, we're approving borrowing tonight.
Right.
And if we were to approve this amount, would it be unreasonable to expect that before the money is spent on that plan, that you come back to this board and outline exactly how the money's going to be spent?
So I, I, if I could just address that. I believe what we're doing now is allowing Pam to have the borrowing, so that you could borrow money for that.
Correct.
At that point, we'll go out, submit an RFP that was the budgeted, you know, reference cost. The cost could come in a lot cheaper, and we will go up in the RFP process and then award a contract to somebody who specializes in this and do a full facilities evaluation. It may come in less, it may come in, you know, I, I don't think it would come in more. It seems like an awful lot of money to me also. And I said, I had the same questions to Will.
Right.
But we'll come before the board to award the contract beforehand, and we could even bring the engineer, who is the lowest bidder, in to explain what needs to be done and why the cost is so high, and what goes in. I know we've got a lot of spalling concrete there and some structural issues. Part of it's getting structural people in, electrical, mechanical, wastewater people. So he was working with an engineer when they came up with that evaluation. But we would do the RFP process like we always do.
And this isn't a permanent borrowing either. When we go out to ban or bond it, then we would, you know, get the exact amount we needed, if this isn't. But this was approved at the April 21st Annual Town Meeting, Article 3V, so.
So, Tony.
Yeah, I, I mean, gosh, we've spent millions and millions of dollars on feasibility studies over the last 15 years, and this is just a really big number that could actually, if you put it into repair work, it would, it would do, you know, do some very nice repairs. So I, I know we have to do studies for this. This just seems outrageously high to me. And I know it's voted a town meeting. I just wonder if, if it would do better putting it into the actual repairs than getting a, a report for the next 20 years that's going to tell us what repairs we should do.
That's what, one of the things that this will do in, in the outline that was submitted. We had a proposal by CDM Smith that broke it all down on what they would do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reading it.
Quick to pull it up.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. So it's...
You know, and they're going with a 20-year plan for the operational efficiency, energy savings, facilities assessment, event and maintenance repairs, order control, code update, control of modernization, assessment of future flows and lows. And, you know, when we do the RFP, which is going to be based on a broad outline similar to what we received for this, you know, we can modify it as it goes. And I'm assuming there's probably some oversight on this plan also for, for looking at some of the different processes. So we can, we can do either. I mean, we can bring Will in, and he was adamant about it, because originally I, I did the same thing you did, as in $600,000. This seems, and he had justification of it. You can have him come before the board, but remember, it will go before the board before the contract's awarded. If you don't want to spend this $600,000 or whatever that RFP comes up to, you know, we don't, we don't have to go with that. Okay, this just says we could pay for it. We did go that way, award a contract.
This is can't be.
Right. So they're projected to do this work within 12 weeks? No. Okay.
We have to put down the RFP, and we have to put an RFP out. He got a breakdown from CDM Smith.
Oh, okay. 12 weeks to do the breakdown, okay.
Yeah.
I was going to say, that's a lot of money not to do. So my feeling on this is, and Will, I think, has explained it many times in different meetings, is, you know, we have a, how old's the plant? I've forgotten when it was built. But it's an aging plant. It has many shortfalls. We know we're going to be faced with challenges on that, just as we have with all of our other infrastructure problems. And that having the tool to really understand what works and doesn't work in existing, the only question I had was the, I guess that's sort of in the, in the improvements or the, what was it called, modernization, that that is, to me, the most important piece of, I mean, yes, we need to know, you know, where we need to put the duct tape and bubble gum, but the modernization piece is going to be, I think, the most critical, is how are we going to keep this plant in this location operable for a while? Will they consider that question, do you think?
Definitely. That's, that's definitely part of the, part of what'll be looked at, yes. You, you look down there, and I know, Tony, I've gone with you probably multiple times, it's Tony's favorite tour of the town. But, you know, you go, you go and you look at some of the old electronics that are running in there, in their, their 480, their three-phase, in, in, you know, they look like something from a 1960s NASA movie where they're pulling switches and everything else. There's a lot of outdated equipment there. So I'm assuming we're going to have electrical engineers. And, and as I said, this will go out on the streets. We'll do an RFP to qualify consultants and, and, you know, go forward on it. We went to one firm and got a, got budget numbers, I believe, who got it. So that's, that's what it is. And I apologize, I didn't, I would have brought Will in, and I didn't read up about it. I didn't know there were, there were any issues going to be on it.
Nancy?
Mr. Chair, if members of the select board find that speed bars, maybe sprinkle it out of the end of borrowing, and then vote with, as a separate issue of borrowing at the time of contract renewal, if they would prefer to do that. We don't need because of borrowing to move forward with the RFP. It was just convenient that you wouldn't have to take a cut of the vote.
Mr. Goodrich, any questions?
I mean, philosophically, just, it's been approved at a town meeting. So to go against the will of the people of what they wanted is a bit bothersome. And I do remember, I think some of the confusion, I think Tony was right to bring up that the seven, the close to $700,000 figure was different. When memory serves, when Will was here, the way he was explaining, he needed to have the nuts-to-bolts kind of review. But I thought there was some discussion, as you're just indicating, that it likely would not be at that higher number. I think that's where my initial confusion was, that it would, it would be less considering. When, when was the last full sewer facility review done?
I don't know. Let me tell you.
That's my answer, then. I mean, I'm, I'm fine to...
To this extent, to this detail, I don't know if it's ever been. You know, the biggest thing we've been dealing with over the past couple of years is to get our copper numbers down, so that we didn't have to put up, put a new outfall. And we've been spending a lot of energy and using a lot of different engineers to get that squared away. You know, we had different engineering firms. We went through re-engineering firms because they were telling us we needed to do a whole new outfall, which should be next to impossible to get permitted. So we were able to come up with a solution. One engineering firm, we could, you know, lower the copper, and we, we actually saved a lot of money because we were looking at, you know, $20 million to do the outfall easily and permitted. So...
I mean, I don't want to hold up the study. I think all of us agree that we need to do a study of the operations of all of our, you know, enterprise funds to find out how they're doing. But the number, as you said, I mean, if it's shocking to you, and you see this stuff every day, it's doubly shocking to us, you know, real, you know, private sector people. So, and there's just been studies that have sat around, and, not that it gets dust, but it, it becomes obsolete, right? If this is a 20-year plan, in year eight, we have to do another one because technology's changed, or, or the, or the, something, something has changed. So...
It does happen. You know, technologies upgrade, or, or the laws change, and they change what our, what our discharge is. I looked at something recently that Will gave me about the shellfish, and it was about the pots per million that were coming out. And they're coming out of the plant, the raw sewage is like 225,000 pots per million bacteria. They come in, they're treated, and by the time they come out, they're down to 25. So the plant's working, but we still have to look into the future, what we need to do to upgrade and keep up with it.
Well, why don't I recommend that we do the RFP, that we, we move forward with this, but then we review it once we see what the detail of the report is, and see if that's what we want to do.
Right. Because when we come, when we come forward to you and say, we've done an RFP, and we've got five different prices, this is our favorite, it might be $600,000, but this guy's our second favorite, and then $200,000, and we would go with the $200,000 study, because we, we do look at money when we do the RFP process.
Yeah. Unfortunately, anyone that's putting in a proposal has already looked at our town meeting, and they've already seen that the town is appropriated.
You'd be surprised, you know, you'd be surprised. No, because they went to work. You know?
If they're, if they're smart, they've already looked at that.
Yeah.
Well, which case we hope they looked at, because I hope they're smart. I, I understand the amount being shocking and big, but I believe that really good plans are necessary so that you don't make mistakes as you're executing a plan. So a really good plan is better than not having a really good plan. So I don't know, maybe we should finish the rest, and then we'll figure out whether or not we want to take that out or leave it in.
Okay. The next one is from the Water Enterprise. It's the engineering and design of the water plant, the SCADA, the SCADA project. Kevin updated me on this project, and I will read to you what he said. He said, "The well, the well at 17 is at 9:05, but still needs the final crucial issue to be completed and tested. The project is going well, but the completion time is 12:10:21. The contract is ahead of schedule, but having issues on completing the project due to pot supply and electrical service with National Grid, which the town has got involved in completing." So we want to take another $500,000 of that project. The other one in the Water Enterprise project is the Hammer Rock Water Maines. And Kevin said that the RFP has just been issued for this project, and the town is going forward with the design of the water line.
So on that project, as we recently discussed, we were going to go forward in getting that together. We just got the RFPs back today. We haven't opened them yet because we have to do our evaluation, different RFPs, and then we'll open the prices afterwards to find out where they are, and the prices fall for that job.
And this is just design?
Just design.
Any questions from the board about Water Enterprise?
Nope.
All right. Widows Walk Enterprise.
So that's the other $770,000, the borrowing part of this project that Jim discussed earlier today. And I'm just going to reiterate probably what Jim told you, but the clubhouse is moving along. It's ahead of schedule. It should be finished in November, and they hope to do the parking lot in late fall.
I have a question about the parking lot. People are shocked, again shocked, when they hear it's going to cost $770,000 to fix that parking lot. If someone could enlighten us, it's too...
It's not.
Thank you.
Between 2 and 3, and then with the additional drainage, about another number?
A lot of drainage, because of where it is next to it.
Right.
There's a lot of drainage, so the whole 700 is not just a lot.
And does it include some of the outside, like the ramps up around the clubhouse? And it's, so it's just, is that included in the? Well, I'm thinking about the fact, you can get the...
It's not, it's the main contract.
Okay, all right. Any questions from the board about that? Any questions from the audience?
There's a transfer station.
Oh.
And then there's the replacement of the 210 front-end loader for the transfer station, $174,170, voted also at the April Town Meeting.
Questions?
One quick question, going back to sewer. Did Cedar Point end on budget?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. We, we did go over budget, absolutely not.
We do not go over budget.
We didn't go over budget.
There were some change orders from the original contract, but I think they were fairly strong.
We did have some change orders, the original pipe, they left the wooden sheeting in on the old sewer. So that went probably a good distance into the point that they had to deal with. That was one of the change orders. We have a couple minor things, there's no drainage in a couple areas over there, and... and we're trying to work with the residents to get a couple easements, so we can add some drainage, so it doesn't flood as much every time it rains. And, um, we had an issue about an island and a couple other things, but there were no significant changes.
So it came in on, on the number that we-
Has it now, yes. We haven't received anything from the contractor stating that he's got a magic hidden change order, but, you know, we, we never know until the contract's over.
Great. Good job.
Yeah, very good. I have one question.
It's a lot of fun.
Yes, Ms. Campfield, I'm sure it was, Ms. Campfield.
Follow-up question, and we touched on this at an earlier meeting. How, when do you think the department, the sewer department, will have an assessment of the impact of the INI from that? I know that they wanted to give it some time.
I'm going to be honest, it could take up to a year, because it's hard to say, because we've got to look at the whole cycle, how it goes, and at the same time, you know, we have, like, toll runners adding in their properties, so it's not, it's a flowing situation, I guess, it's a fluid situation.
Not to be funny.
It could when it comes to it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Pun's intended. Any other questions? So, the, the question I have now is, do we still want to include the amount for the sewer study, or do we want to reduce it, remove it?
I'll make a motion to leave it in there.
All right, I agree.
Move the board approve a borrowing from the stabilization fund in the amount of $4,454,170 for Articles Seven, excuse me, Three R and Three T from the April 2018 Annual Town Meeting, Article Four from the June 2020 Annual Town Meeting, and Articles Three V, Three W, Three C, C, and Twenty from the April 21st Annual Town Meeting, as permitted by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Campfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four of nothing, motion carries. Thank you very much.
So, Kevin, you'll bring that, that proposal will come before us for the first bit?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Unless we keep it under $50,000.
Right.
Then you can be, then you can-
Enjoy.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
So, here we are with Mr. Cafferty's on again.
That's all.
Yes.
It's a small contract here.
So, oh, wait, I thought someone said Karen?
So, I was going to bring up Sean Anderson and Steve Rafferty. Steve Rafferty is, um, with Time Bond, the owner's project management firm that, um, we hired in one of the previous contracts, um, and he had a lot of experience with water treatment plants. And you let him know that we have 660,000 dollars for the, for this treatment plant, so I hope their price is going to be-
659.
Unfortunately, he only does water, he doesn't do sewers, so.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you for coming in.
Glad to be here.
Uh, so I can start up. We, um, we went through, we went through a long process. We put, um, an RFP out. Obviously, we, as per state law, we went through and got known as project manager. They put together an RFP, we put it out to-
How many firms?
We published it in the Central Register.
Central Register.
We got seven firms that responded, um, and we had a selection committee, including a member of the Board of Selectmen, yourself, Kevin, town engineer, and, uh, do we have another person?
Sean Anderson, yeah, we, we had a, Eric was involved, we had, we had quite a few people involved.
So, they were voting members. In our role, we were advisory, looking them over, um, a lot of good firms, you know, they were, they were people interested, and what we were looking at is people that had a clear understanding of scope and scale of the project, some of the constraints of the project, the ball field, the new site that was obtained, funding for at the town meeting, um, and we narrowed it down over the course of a couple meetings to three firms, at which time we then conducted, um, sort of a field trip to two facilities.
Well, we did, we interviewed the-
We interviewed, yep, yep.
We interviewed the three companies, actually, we did it by Zoom at that time, and then we had two companies that people were split on, and then we went up to look at facilities that they had recently built. Fortunately, there were two up in New Hampshire, one for UNH, and the other one was for Portsmouth. And we also reviewed the systems, um, and how they did it, we toured the plants, talked to the operators, um, talked to the superintendents, took tours out there, and really, it was a, it was a pretty thorough examination of it. In the end, um, kind of by consensus, we all came up with the company Woodward and Current. In the way it's designed by, um, state law, then you follow up and you go into negotiation period. You write a scope of services, the scope of services shows everything that we would want for design of a plant, including evaluation of the two different sites, as well as different areas that you can do, pilot studies, permitting, this also includes, you know, bidding and award, we have money in there for construction administration, and that's how the fee schedule was put together.
So, at this time, we do have a contract from Woodward and Current, signed by them, copies were in the board package, I believe. But we are here asking tonight is to authorize the town administrator to proceed forward with what we call Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One is primarily the pilot plant work, which has to proceed, uh, to get state approval. You have to do piloting work in the warmest part of the year and the coldest part of the year. We have a subcontract that are lined up, they've been to the site, people have been working a little bit to be prepared. We have a document in front of the DEP, we got the first round of review comments on it today, um, and they're prepared to start that pilot work, essentially, within the next week or two weeks after tonight's, if we get a positive action on tonight's thing. Absent of that, we probably move all scheduled by close to a year, um, because of the timetable of when you have to do the work in July and August. So, Phase One is a big chunk of that, if you look, there's a breakdown of fees in that, a big chunk of that is the pilot work. Then there's doing survey work, geotechnical work, just doing an evaluation of what would, what it would be like to actually physically put the plant at the existing plant site, how to do that versus using the new site to develop a very good basis of cost, so we'll know what the project's going, what it truly costs as we come out of this Phase One work. That total cost is about a million, is a million 370. At the end of that first phase, which would be about eight or nine months from now, we would be in a position to start the detailed design of the facility, and the detailed design would be another 2.2 million plus or minus, but we're asking you approval for the three and a half now, so we keep going on it, and we'll give you regular updates as you would want to hear about the progress of the project.
At what point would we make a decision about the siting?
So, the siting decision would, would-
After Phase One.
At the end of Phase One, okay?
So they'll need clear direction by the end of Phase One to do the finished design.
So, by, this total estimate is only to get us to a decision between the sites?
No, it'll, it'll bring us up for full design. That's Phase One, Phase Two is full design and all the permitting.
Of whichever site they choose.
So, if I, if I get the swan slot, because they will, they will pilot different treatments, techniques, and they'll say, okay, this is the best technique for our particular-
Water.
Then they will say, okay, to build a plant with this system, that'll load the bucket, will look like this, will cost this, to build it at the alternate site, it'll look like this, and cost this, and at that point, the board says, okay, put it A, okay.
Okay, all right, good.
And then, then, once you do that, then you go into Phase Two, which is the full design and permitting for the actual-
For the actual site.
Actual, building on the actual site.
All right, okay, thank you. Andrew, would you like to start, if you have any questions?
No, I mean, I, I just, I just wanted, yeah.
I know you were responding with your group.
I think, Kevin, as you sold the process a little bit short, and I think folks at home should know a bit about it, too, about just the level of detail of these folks, and again, Time Bond was instrumental, so I just want to thank you, um, and the firm for, for being such a great help, um, through that. But, you know, looking who these lead managers are, looking at the topography and how, um, this, I feel very comfortable being part of that process and understanding the key players and who they are. I'm actually, I'm excited for this project, and about the, for this firm looking at the different options, like we said, and understanding that there's all these different options that are there. I mean, they were looking at the, they knew, like, the height of the fence of the Little League Field, I mean, I can't, the level of detail was incredible, um, that I think folks at home should know, should be comfortable with decisions during this process. So I guess I just wanted to leave that out there, that it was very thorough.
Okay, so my marketing skills aren't the greatest, but we did do, we did do a lot of detail in this, and it was, it was very, it was a very thorough vetting process, and a lot of time was spent on it. We had, you know, even during the COVID, we had Zoom meetings, it seemed like every week, for hours and hours going over this in interviews.
Currently, Sean, myself, and the designated project manager from Woodward, current woman named Renee Blonza, we've been getting on the phone every Wednesday, 2 o'clock, going down the, what we call the ball and court list, whereas things, you know, all these little things as we're moving forward, so it's weekly communication. My job is to keep this job on schedule or push it ahead of schedule, and also to watch your money, and make sure that we spend it as frugally, but as wisely as we can.
And Steve's background is, he, he's been in the water industry for a long time, as well as he was in charge of the Falmouth Plant when that went into place, so he's got a lot of experience with this.
Forty, 42 years.
I think I met you in the library about a year ago, when we were still meeting in person about the, the whole water study, yeah.
It's quite possible.
Karen?
Um, bunch, mostly for, so, it's a lot of money, so I want to ask a bunch of questions just so I understand, but-
Good.
Our con, if you remind me, our contract with Time Bond, and here it says through the design process, but you're the OPM for the project, is that contract executed, or?
Yes, that's executed.
Okay, I, I wasn't 100% sure on that one.
It stuck with me.
Sorry? I was stuck, good, that's good. Um, the other, just some clarif-, these are mostly clarification questions. Um, when Phase One and Phase Two are complete, um, obviously, it says, uh, you know, that the authorization is required for the other phases, does that require a full rebidding, or how does that work?
No, so what we'll, what we'll do at that point, we will probably, actually, we will, we'll probably have the design engineers come in to the board and present where they are in what they're coming up for costs, um, on the two different projects, with the two different locations, and, and what they think the best location will be. As they get to about 75% design, 25% or 75%, they'll be able to start giving us cost estimates of what they think the total cost would be. At some point, we're going to have to go out and, and get the money to actually build the plant when we get those cost estimates, as well as complete the rest of the fees. The construction administration, that means they would have people on site full-time watching over the construction, as well as, you know, and those are all budget estimate numbers, as well as having engineers in here when we start running the new plant to say, okay, this works this way. Sean and Eric, this is how you run your SCADA system, the training facilities and, and that type of stuff. So those are some of the additional costs that are involved in that.
My approach in terms of getting a scope and budget from them was to give a hard budget for the Phase One, which is what we know is going to be done, but also to put them a price, you know, a range of prices, for them to provide the services all the way through construction, so I can start building a cost model that says, well, we think our costs are going to be what the ranges are, and not, you know, every six or eight months, if I can get a new number in front of us, but rather have a range, and then work it down into a reasonable number. As we also need to begin preparing for submitting documentation to the state to get you on the state's funding list for the project, uh, and line you up with this infrastructure money coming down the road.
So without cause, though, this contract commits us to a partnership throughout, for the, all phases?
Not, not, not entirely. It's, it's, it's at your discretion if you will authorize each successive phase.
Okay. Great, that's what I want to know. Um, may I continue?
Sure.
Okay. Um, on the build, on, on Phase One, the building envelope concepts, it says up to six buildings, it, I assume that's three for each site, probably?
Not necessarily, so-
Okay.
One of the factors that will affect the overall costs is what's the building look like. Architects, um, like to come up with ideas and concepts, so depending upon the two different sites, one site's going to be a much more visible site than the other. But we also, again, this is back to pinning down costs at a reasonable level. Do you want a brick and block building, or do you want a pre-engineered building? Okay, there's different types of building structures you can get, and they have a range of costs. And so, rather than walk out at the end of the thing, and go into detailed design, and then discover that you have to cut money out of the budget later, we've suggested that we talk about what the building looks like, um, right up front, and, and start looking at, you know, what does it cost for different types of building structures, which I think would be useful information for other structures you're doing.
Yeah, definitely.
And then also, in Phase One, I think you just answered this question, um, the probable cost will be on, on both locations in the Phase One, just, um-
Yes.
The one thing that I did want to note that I don't see in here, we do talk about public meeting support is required, but, um, but there's no, uh, public outreach, they're not required under this contract to participate in any kind of outreach prior to town meeting. And I think that we may need that, because, especially with the alternate site, we're going to need to reach out to folks and have them understand what we're proposing long before town meeting. Is that something that you think Time Bond is capable, and I know you're capable? Is it appropriate to have that as part of your work, or does that need to be something we ask them to include in this? So, you know, just to know that they're going to come.
No, it's, it's a, it's a good question. We didn't specifically ask them to develop an outreach program because it's tough to scope what the outreach program would be at this moment. I would suggest that, once we've looked at the sites, and we're going to move into detailed design for the next phase, we have the opportunity to amend the contract as necessary, um-
Okay.
Okay, to add that in. We did have them in there to prepare materials for a presentation.
Mm-hmm. Right. Right, and that's, that's the lion's share of it, yeah, and just to answer questions. Okay, um, I think that's all I had for now.
No more?
I have highlighted-
I'm watching the highlighting here.
Scribbles, I have everything.
How much more highlighting is there? Tony?
Yeah, not, not much fun in addition to that. Just help me with the numbers a little bit. So, we're asking for 3.5 million, and where's that, is that getting us to, through Phase Two?
That, that will get you through Phase One and Phase Two, and you'll have documents that are, are bid-ready, right? Because those numbers just don't add up.
So I, I think what's throwing you off maybe is the, the full design and permitting is a budget from 2.2 to 2.7.
Yep.
And the reason it's a budget, because we don't know which site we're going to work on yet. If we go to one site, there might be additional permitting if we have to go and put a new inflow in, from the reservoir, in Cross 3A to bring it over to the other facility.
No, no, I understand that, but the 1.370 plus either of those numbers does not equal-
It is more than 3.5, but we're only asking to authorize up to 3.5, because that's what's available, and I do believe that both the first task, there's a couple of items that we will not do, just because we, as a simple one, there's a wetlands delineation, it's not a big number, but we believe those wetlands are already delineated, we just haven't got the paperwork in front of us, okay? So, again, watching every dime for you.
So, for example, the reservoir project, we did wetlands delineation, we're going to talk to Tetra Tech and get the data over to Woodward and Current, so they don't have to redo a whole survey on that, so there is some, there's some overlap we might be able to use.
And then, in the motion, right above the motion, it says total cost estimate is 6.2 to 7.2.
For all engineering?
That's all, so that's not construction?
That, that's not the construction cost, that's just engineering.
So that's going to give you the plan, and then you go to a builder?
That's going to give us a plan, it also has construction administration, where it has the engineers that are out there overseeing the project. That's one of the things that, we may go with somebody else, or, that's one of the alternates that we have, but these are just the budget numbers to show everybody where we potentially are.
So $7 million of the project is planning and administration of it, then the building component will get us up to the 400. the building component will get us up to the forty million that we were thinking before, and that's the equipment as well.
Yep.
And then we're just looking to advance about half of that now to get us through phase two.
To get, to get to a set of plans that we have a hard cost number on that are ready to go to, to construction, that we can go to town meeting to get the, the money to do that.
And that will be for two sites?
No.
One site.
This is what I'm getting confused.
You get estimates for two sites.
In phase one, in phase one, we're gonna conceptualize how you, so I'm gonna backtrack. The pilot work is gonna start. The pilot work will tell us how big the tanks have to be, okay? Depending upon the quality of your water and the way we prove out the treatment, the tanks might be a hundred feet by a hundred feet, or they might be two hundred feet by two hundred feet. The state requires you to prove out that it's gonna work. We have a good sense of how it's gonna work, but this will prove it out. And through that, we're able to become efficient about the tankage size. Once we know how many tanks we need to have, then we say, how do you put it on the Old Oak and Bucket site? How do you put it on the new site? But in addition to the tankage, the other items that you were talking about sewer before is, right now, existing treatment plant discharges to the sewer. We're asking, and one of the reasons we chose Woodward and Curran is because they're, have some real expertise in this, is what's gonna be called a zero discharge. In other words, we're gonna not put water back into the sewer, we're gonna figure out how to get the solids out, save them up the Harlem someplace someday, but in the meantime, get all that water back. You're putting twenty, thirty thousand gallons of water a day into the sewer. We want to keep that twenty or thirty thousand gallons of water in the water supply, okay? So once we figure out what it looks like on those two sites, Woodward and Curran will say, this is what it's gonna cost and this is how long it will take to build it on each of those two sites. We will then have a meeting, a discussion and a conversation about that and make a decision whether we're gonna stay at the old site or go to the new site. Once that decision's made, then we're gonna release them, just begin the, the detailed design on that, okay? But, but we're not gonna go forward with two treatment plants, we're gonna go forward with one treatment plant and it's gonna be a treatment plant that in my opinion should serve this town for the next fifty years, not, not a twenty year. We really wanna look at the big picture of how this thing works and do it right.
Well, I, I will say that the communication strategy, I agree, is really key to this because obviously where the treatment plant is now, is it a very visible, it's almost like one of the first things you see when you come into town from the Marshfield side, it's the introduction to the harbor and, you know, the beautiful area on the Driftway and it's got a ball field on it and we have a ball field shortage still. So, um, I think once we start to get out, people start to realize that, that we're considering what we're thinking about, plus there will be neighborhood issues up on the, the site off of three A. If we can get in and out of there without having to go through the neighborhood ever at all, that would be, uh, you know, obviously a good thing, but if it's a visible from a certain angle, that's gonna create issues. So I really think that communicating, communicating, communicating all along so that people don't feel like all of a sudden this is being dropped on them. And you can never tell people enough that you're doing something and that you're doing it and then you've done it and you, you know, so, um, because this is a big deal for this town. It's a big, huge investment and it's a big problem that we've got in terms of our water quality and so, um, I just would like to say communications and if we have to, you know, add in some money here out of this, what we're approving tonight, put some of it aside to make sure that we've got professional communications, people who know how to communicate. I think that would be, you guys are experts, but sometimes you need people to simplify and keep, keep the information flowing so that.
Not all engineers look in tunnels. We, we get some that look a little broad.
Sometimes you come out, look around and see the telephone calls, um, so that's what I have to say.
You actually make a very good point, which is one site is a very visible site and so that's an issue. The other site is large enough that the buffer will make it almost invisible, okay? Um, I'm coming off of the project in Falmouth where we built a brand-new plant. The entryway looks very nice, but you don't see the treatment plant, you don't hear the treatment plant, you know, people have gone up to the treatment plant, they're like, oh. So, um, we've already looked at the size of that parcel and realized that there's enough room to maintain a very definitive buffer to the, to the abutters.
Which I assume is good for security as well.
Absolutely.
Andrew?
I just, I don't wanna, uh, jump the gun a little bit, but Woodward and Curran had it, there's an entire section in that plan about communications and about outreach and we actually talked about it, that we're there and I, forgive me, I forget the, the woman's name, but she, they have someone whose sole purpose is just for communication and that's.
And I want everyone to know that.
Yeah, so that there'll be.
I mean, we can read the report, but if you haven't read the report or someone else hasn't read the report.
Um, I, I would say that, you know, the real outreach begins as we're getting to the decision between the two sites. So we need to gather the information.
Right.
Do the evaluation here and then develop a plan for outreach and design.
Yeah. And the, and the other element too, I know we talked about the total cost adjust of, um, construction, but let's also not forget between those two systems and the two sites, there's also just ongoing costs that, that will definitely be part of that report because the passive system, passive system versus a more active system, there's electricity costs, more equipment costs, and not just construction, but understanding that as well. So folks at home can know as well that one may be a million dollars cheaper, but it's gonna cost a hundred thousand dollars more a year, electricity or whatever, so that'll all also be in there as well, because that's gonna really matter.
The buzzword we use is lifecycle cost.
Okay.
Okay. New buzzword.
New buzzword. Tony, anyone else?
Just one follow-up question, say, it's exactly what Andrew's saying, when we come to that juncture where we're making that decision, not really your job, but you guys, um, the, if we are not putting all of that water into our sewer system, can that be, we want that quantified and want that, you know, because that has other benefits obviously to our town. Um, so at that juncture, it's really important to have that.
Definitely, you could say if you remove twenty thousand, that's equivalent to a huge I and I project.
Right, but just, you know, be mindful when we get to that point that that's gonna be a really key element in our consideration.
Yep.
Great, that's all I have.
Now, um, I'll just bring up, are you guys all set with questions and everything else?
I think so. Does anyone in the audience, no, everyone, everyone works for us here.
No.
Oh, wait a minute.
Right in the back.
Oh, I see, so, you don't work for us, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I had a couple of questions for Steve and I, and I asked him to prepare for this because I thought it might have been a couple of questions that the board might have asked. And, um, I'll ask him in front of everybody and because people may come up and ask you, you know, why doesn't, and this is for Steve and Sean directed, I know the answer, so I'm cheating, but I'll let them answer, is why don't we just forget about the treatment plant and put in five more wells and not worry about the water and we'll just take it all from the wells? And I'll, I'll let one of you guys take that one.
Well, I'll tackle that. The, putting any well in is a fair amount of outreach work because you have to have a zone that, that well contributes to. But beyond that, within the town of Sitewatt, there's no known location where there's a lot of water to be drawn out of a well. So if the treatment plant's doing half of what we're doing right now, what would you like to do?
We need to be able to do two million a day, right?
Yeah, so if the treatment plant can do two million a day, you'd have to find, most of your wells are a hundred to two hundred thousand gallons, so that's a lot of sites. Um, so it's, it's, and then you have the equipment, the maintenance, um, and the different quality of water at each site, um, behind you, you know? If you were in a different location in the state, sitting on top, if you were down more in the Plymouth area, there's, you know, you could put a well in and get a million gallons. It's worth the effort at that point, but here you can't do that. It's not available.
And some of those wells might need to be treated for PFAS as well as green sand for iron and manganese.
Until you do it, you don't know, yeah.
We don't know. So that, that was one of the questions I had. The other question I asked them before we went forward with this is, why don't we just run a pipe and tie into mass water resources and save a ton of money that way? So I'll just let you take that one.
So over the course of my career, I've had a little bit of involvement with the MWRRA, I was the engineer on their treatment plant, uh, in Marlboro. There is a provision in the MWR.
Is there one on the highway? You can see it?
No, when you, that, that's actually the reservoir.
That's the reservoir.
But that's part of the system.
Yeah.
That's where the Metro West tunnel surfaces. Um, there is a provision in the MWR's charter for communities to join. Um, I always forget whether it's Redding or North Redding, but I think it took them eighteen years to get to the point where they are now a partial member, so, um, the exercise to become a member of the MWRRA, although it looks like legally on paper that there's a provision for it, steps in the process to do it, will take, you know, fifteen to twenty years, uh, for it to happen.
So we should have started that fifteen years ago?
It makes our rates look pretty cheap.
They have not figured out how to get from Braintree to Weymouth, the airbase, the line from all the way down here.
The permitting to go through all the, all the communities between here and there, some of whom have considered trying to get on the MWR and decided it wasn't the way they want to go and they're on their own upgrades to the Braintree, Weymouth systems and whatnot.
So I, I just wanna throw those questions out because a lot of people say, why don't we do this? Why are we doing this? You know, you could run four miles of pipe, tie in and you'd be all set, you wouldn't have to spend the money on the treatment plant or just put in six more wells. I know down in, you know, the west end is an area that's really wet, you know, and we'll get a billion gallons of water per day and we'll be all set. So we've, we've looked at a lot of different facets and we've talked about it, but I, I wanna give these guys a chance to talk. And Sean said, Sean's answer was, well, we have wells seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, some towns have like wells three, four and five, you know, and the reason we, we're so high is because we've drained our wells and don't have enough water and have to go and find new wells. And as you find new wells, they become more and more restrictive. We're working diligently on the Dolan Well Field, but you need a four hundred foot diameter for, um, the zone of influence of the well to protect the well from cross contaminants, you need to own that amount of land. It's, it's fairly significant, so I just, I wanna bring that up to everybody that we have been looking at different solutions. And, um, that was one of the things we were talking about is could we just tie in the mass water or just pop in more wells?
Can I just ask, ask a question or make a comment? Um, and this is for, for the people watching, the, the new plant isn't necessarily gonna get rid of our brown water, right? So the, the plant is being designed because the one that we have is old and not as advanced as it needs to be and it doesn't have the redundancy and it has some functional issues of the plant itself, but is brown water gonna be resolved from this? I mean, probably to some degree because the cleaning mechanisms will be a little bit better.
This'll help significantly because right now, one of the sources of brown water we've been getting is coming through the plant. As it gets warmer and we have more demand, as Jim was saying earlier, if our demand is high and we're sucking a lot of water up, we're sucking manganese up from the pond. Unfortunately, the well over Tac Factory Pond Road, it had extremely brown water, so instead of treating the water, we pump the water over to the reservoir. So for the past twenty-five years or twenty years, we've been pumping heavily laden manganese water into the reservoir.
From the well to the reservoir?
To the reservoir. And that's been keeping the, the well going. So sometimes when we have a high demand and they have two million gallons per day that we're using, we're getting more and more calls about the brown water and we can see we're tracking additional brown water through the.
So the, our current plant is not getting the manganese out of it?
Current plant does not get the manganese out. The new system that we're putting in is designed to treat manganese also. So it, it will definitely be a huge help.
Okay, good.
So if, if that answers that question. Did I, if you guys want to?
Yeah, I would, I would say the new plant will really improve the water quality, the color situation of the water that the homeowners see. One of the reasons we're in front of you tonight is so we can start the piloting right now when we're in our worst conditions for water with the goal of, out of that pilot, producing crystal clear water. Okay? Right now, you're not putting crystal clear water from the treatment plant into the system. If you're putting fifty, sixty percent of your water in as crystal clear water with all the pipework you've done, the ice picking, the directional flushing, you're gonna see a big change.
Okay, good, I didn't realize that.
And just to, um, clarify one thing, Kevin said, seventeen A actually pumps directly into Tac Factory Pond, um, which is right behind the reservoir and it's right where we pull our water from. So if you have some time, we're spilling over right now, plus eight and a half inches of the reservoir, Old Oak and Bucket is spilling over heavily. If you have a chance just to look at the color of the water that, that's there, to, to pull from that and actually get to produce what they do produce is incredible. Unfortunately, the manganese is going through the plant and when it gets up into the system, it first turns a little bit yellow, then it turns brown and eventually it causes black water.
So is it not being treated at the green filter up?
It will be now.
It will be.
It will be now, but remember for the past since they brought that pipe from that well over and were putting it into the pond, that's been pumping that black water into the pond for the past, you know, twenty-something years.
So just in, in the five years that I've been here, I've seen, um, O B, Old Oak and Bucket Pond, the water quality in the pond deteriorate in the five years I've been here. It's just, you know, it's such a small area, such a small, it's got a lot of organics in there. We're gonna pilot it and if we're successful with the pilot and we can clean that water one hundred percent, we can be able to clean that water or clean the reservoir water. Reservoir water is a lot cleaner.
I, I would suggest, you know, sometime over the next couple of weeks, we're gonna be moving three or four trailers in and setting them up for the pilot plant. Once it's up and running, we'll let you know. We'd welcome, any day you wanna stop in and see what it looks like.
Where's that gonna be?
Right at the plant, where the, where the people have parked their cars right now.
I think Ruth just left the room, but I think some sort of article in the paper about this is the very beginning of this project, everyone, this is what is happening here, people are gonna think automatically, oh, they're building a new water treatment plant right there, right now. That's what they're gonna think. And so I think that anything we can do to calm people down and let them know we are at the very beginning of a very, well, we're not even very beginning, we're at the middle of the beginning of a very long process and that they will be apprised as we go along. And so if you see heavy equipment or things going on at that site, it will get noticed.
It won't be so much heavy equipment as it's really going to be, I'm just, just because we're on the air. It's gonna be some trailers.
Okay.
Okay? And the trailers have a lot of.
Even those raise suspicions. What's in the trailer?
The bunker.
What are they doing with the trailers?
They hide in those trailers.
How long are the trailers gonna be there? When are the trailers leaving?
They'll, they, they will be there for July and August.
Okay.
They're going someplace else in September.
That's why we were acting quick.
And then they'll, then they'll come back in the winter.
Well, or even a sign that says this is, people love to read signs and if it has some signage on it so that people understand that, you know, we're, we're working on improving our water quality and this is part of it, it, it's helpful.
Good suggestion.
Yep. So on, on that note, this is the perfect segue, I invited the Economic Development Committee as well as the Water Resources Committee for a tour of the water treatment plant this Friday at nine.
Great.
If any of the board members would like to go, they're more than welcome. Um, I also thought if any of the public wanna go for a tour, um, they could call down. I don't wanna run fifty people through the plant at once.
Right.
But maybe we could take groups of ten following Fridays in, between Sean, Eric and myself, we could take people on tours if people are interested.
That's great.
So, um, what I would ask if they do is to call the water department, put their name on a list and then we will set it up and do it on alternating Fridays so they can see what it looks like if they've always had questions of what that building's like.
That's great. Lorraine, can that go on our Facebook page?
Sure.
That'd be great.
It's not really a poster.
Yeah, thank you. One more? And yes, go ahead.
Listen, Kevin, you started the what-ifs.
Listen, Kevin, you started the what-ifs.
I did?
Here's the one-
I might have another what-if.
Sorry, Jim, but it's, no, because we were at the Department of Marine Fisheries were here recently, and we were talking about the effluents from our plant and how the quality is, the sewer treatment, it's gotten better and better and better and better. And that was part of that meeting. And so the question, I guess, is for all of you, is where in the timeline of state regulations is gray water going to be something that we consider as a source for potable water?
Well, they do it now in California for some of the gray water. But one of the things Sean and I were discussing is potentially at some point, we were talking about running some water to a recharge area, some of our water, potentially from one of the green sand filters to run it back to a recharge area for one of the wells. And you can expand on that, Sean, because I-
It's called water skimming, and it's basically when we're flowing like we are now naturally, it's to take some of that water and throw it to a recharge area. And it's just, it's very simply, but you have to find the proper location for the water to go down into the groundwater. It has to be approved, and it has to be so many days away from becoming your water supply again, I guess. It's anywhere near while-
Our thought process was to take the pipe now that leaves Tac Factory Pond Road and pumps to the, you know, was pumping to the pond, and set that up so that we could shut that down and reverse the flows on that, and then pump that water into a recharge area in the winter or any other areas when we have excess water. And that water would eventually recharge the well and continue operation for that well. So it is something we're looking into.
I was talking about the sewer discharge.
Yeah. I'm going to take a shot at this. So in western states where there's a severe water shortage, they have developed and implemented gray water systems. Massachusetts currently does not have in place regulations relative to gray water per se. They do have some regulations in place relative to how you can use wastewater affluent for certain irrigation, non-consumable locations. But Massachusetts has not yet sort of hit the wall on water. Last summer was a dry summer. We may be in a dry cycle, at which point there is a state drought task force, which puts alerts out there for when the water levels are down in certain areas, drives the, you know, watering bans in a lot of communities. So it's a great question about when will they come? But there's not enough pressure at the state level through the drought situation for the state to have picked up and started to act on active gray water systems.
Well, maybe the sewer study cannot look at ways to capture some water.
We kind of talked about, you know, the golf course would be perfect.
Right.
Because the treatment plant's right there, coupled up with the golf course. However, it's also very close to Well 18B.
Be careful.
So there'd be a real issue of putting gray water on the golf course that close to a potable well. So that's the obvious one, right? The golf course is right there, it's right up the street from the treatment plant, but then Well 18B is going to complicate that. And having to take Well 18B offline because we're going to water the golf course.
Okay, thank you.
We looked into that when we had the big drought. We, you know, the golf course was in trouble, and we were looking to see if we could do anything with gray water. And we got a lot of pushback from the state. We have to do major improvements to the plant before they'd allow that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Anyone in the audience? No? All right, thank you very much.
We have to vote?
We have to vote. Oh, great.
They want a lot of money.
We're just here for our entertainment, anyway.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, I would.
Move that the select board award the engineering design and permitting services for a new water treatment facility, Woodward and Curran, and to authorize the town administrator to authorize Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the contract for a total sum not to exceed $3.5 million.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Sorry. 4-0, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keep you posted.
Sean, no, we're all set. Sean, I'll keep track of what's going to be the reservoir state after we know the contract. Hey, so that was quick. We have an item?
Yes, the water reservoir update.
Nope.
I'm sorry, the front loader.
Front end loader. So everybody that goes to the transfer station sees the loader. It works nonstop. A year ago, it had almost 17,000 hours on it. We like to, it's equivalent to about 40 miles every hour that you put on a piece of equipment on that. So if you look at that, that would be an equivalent to 675,000 miles on the piece of equipment. So we've got our life out of it. It's worked hard. We're going to replace that loader with, which we bought in 2010 with a new loader, and retire that loader, not retire it, but we'll put that just for snow duty and emergency cleanup and work around the transfer station. We might use it to do snow cleanup or whatever. It'll just be an extra loader that gets minimal use just for cleanups or emergencies. I did make one modification to the quote that you had there. It included $4,500 for a set of forks. I removed that from the quote, so the actual price is $163,900.
What was approved? I'm sorry. Ask a question.
Go ahead.
Be my guest.
What was approved at town meeting? Doesn't say what.
I think it was 185 maybe, or 180. Nancy's going to hit me in a matter of-
174.
174.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions? Comments? Do I hear a motion?
All right. Move that the board is looking to award a contract to purchase a 2020 Caterpillar 930M front-end loader from Southworth Milton for $163,900.
Second? Second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. Next, next is the update on the reservoir.
Next is the update on the reservoir. Ian, I'll bring up Sean McCarthy also with us. And Sean, you can see, all three of us can talk. Any questions? We'll be able to answer everything.
Liz, it's water, water, water.
Water, water, water.
I'd like to put in a plug for the man, the citizen who wrote the book about the water system. Everyone should read it. The water problems are the same as they were 100 years ago.
They were. It's incredible. And, you know, we actually learned from that because Sean and I were talking, and we were saying, in the past, some of the thought process was run the treatment plant as little as possible. And part of the reason for that is it was cheaper because you're not paying the manpower by running the wells. But when you look at it as a whole with water resources, you're actually better off shutting your wells down and letting them rejuvenate and running the plant in the winter if you have the water so that you can give those wells a rest so that when you need that water, you have it instead of sucking it up now. So that's one of the fundamental changes that, you know, we'll be looking at, you know, we've been trying to put through. This year's been a tough year because we're down two wells because we're hooking up the green sand filters to both of those wells, and we're looking for improvements, you know, next year even because we'll be using less water coming from the treatment plant during these busy times. So let me get on to the reservoir. Town submitted the permit application in a draft form to the EOEEA, which is the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. The EOEEA then submits to all divisions, everybody they think could be affected by the reservoir, Fisheries, DEP, everybody you could think of. So we recently got back questions and concerns they have about it, which was 72 pages, 52 questions. They weren't just, you know, they weren't easy questions. So we're in the process, or our consultant is in the process of going through and answering all those questions so that we can submit a final report and start this acting on the Once we can get that permitted and accepted, then we will submit a variance with the DEP, which will probably be in the fall of 2021 sometime, fall to, you know, winter. Tetra Tech is the engineering firm that we've been using, and they've been doing a good job. I mean, it's really thorough what we're doing with it. You know, Sean and I were talking, both Shons and I were talking before the meeting, and we were saying we probably could have brought Tetra Tech to get into high details, but we only had, we only have so many meetings with Tetra Tech, and we thought we'd give it a shot of explaining and answering all the questions for the board without spending the money on it to save it for future public outreach.
Well, I think we just generally have had a few, you know, citizen questions about, so what's going on with the reservoir? So I don't think that, I certainly wasn't looking for any too much detail other than what's the kind of timeline? What do we think might, it might look like when it gets raised? Very sort of basic, simple questions.
Well, it'd be a lot bigger. You know, I think, what's the total elevation when raising Sean? Is it 1.5?
I think it is 18 inches.
18 inches. So it'd be raised up 18 inches. But it's kind of hard to say that. One of the things that they're doing now, and out of these 52 questions, some of the things that they have to do is they have to run other analysis to see how much land's going to be moved and hydroanalysis and a bunch of other things. So it's not something that we typically have a lot of experience with. That's why we hired Tetra Tech so that they could run all these analyses. So they're running additional reports and additional analysis to answer all the questions.
So the simple stupid question is, we can't dig down, right?
No, because then we'd even have more people involved in it because that'd be dredging. We'd even have the Army Corps of Engineers involved in that. And the other problem is, how do you dredge and keep giving people water? That's the biggest issue. What do you do? You know, how do you, how do you get by? You need that, we need that water.
Right.
You know, we can't-
Also, you see that right now, the reservoir holds water. If you start digging, there's that water, there's not-
Just-
Break the seal.
You break the seal, basically. Break the water to the ball, it's going to just be absorbed, so.
Because I think when people drive by and they see that it's really just a big muddy pit over there, they think, "Well, I'll just dig it deeper."
You know, I've heard rumors that, you know, they were supposed to line it back when they were building it, and both you guys can correct me if I'm off base here, and I heard, well, it rained, there was a hurricane that came up, it filled up with water, and they said it holes, and they didn't bother lining it. Am I wrong on that one?
That's what I've heard, too.
That's the lore that happened, that they were going to line it and dig it all out. So any of that sediment that builds up, you know, that's why you see the bottom of trees down there because it held. And the fear people warned of is you go and rip a tree out, you've just created a straw, and you're going to drain some of the reservoir. So we went with it. We agreed, you know, we said, "Okay." It made sense because, you know, we heard from a lot of people, "Let's just go out and dig it." When we had the big drought, "Let's just go out and dig it down another 20 feet and we'll gain all this water." But it wasn't necessarily-
Not as simple as it sounds. Questions from the board? Just you mentioned the timeline. So when are they supposed to finish the 52 questions?
So we're looking to submit the final permit. It's actually the permit application, fall to the winter, depending on how quick the analysis go together, and they get everything all put together.
And there's an interim step they're working on now?
They're working on it now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are we still going to get with that 18 inches of, I guess we raise the dam 18 inches and it kind of goes up on the land another five or six feet, something like that? That's what we talked about.
Yeah, I think even eight to 14 feet in some areas. It depends on the elevation. It's topographic before. You know, I know we had Tetra Tech in here before, and they showed the drawings before and after what it is, but we didn't bring that technology with us.
Is it still going to get us an extra 30-day supply?
That was the plan.
Now, sometimes the water floods the road now. What's going to happen?
Like right now, we're at, we're at eight and a half inches over. So, you know, we get another four inches, like they're saying we could. We could be 14 inches over and those areas flood anyways.
So when you say over, over the dam?
Yes. It's overflowing significantly now.
Right.
It's spilled.
But eight inches?
Eight inches, yeah.
The hair in there happy.
Interesting.
So when you talk about raising it, we're not going to see a big wall on 3A? This is all-
I'd love to put a big wall up at 3A, to be honest with you. I legitimately would, just for protection from the reservoir. I get paranoid, you know, that it's wide open like that. But no, it's more of a, like a batterboard 18 inches higher than it is now.
To the back?
To the back.
So it won't look that different to people driving down 3A?
They'll see a difference. The back's going to be different, and then the front will be different, though.
And you've been in touch with the lady who lives in the house next door? The little antique house?
The one that just moved in?
Yes.
Or the lady across the street that we talked to at town meeting?
No, the lady-
We've been in a little bit of touch with them, but we don't have the answers for her questions yet until we get this permit put together.
Okay, because it's the lady who owned the antique house that's on the, she just moved in within the past year or two.
Yep. And that's something we would have Tetra Tech probably involved in the discussions with because they would have the answers and be able to show, you know, with a drawing to the extent of-
What's going to happen to her? Yeah. All right. Any questions? Any other questions? No? Audience? No? All right, thank you. Thank you very much for coming in.
No problem. Anything else we can tell you about water while we're here?
Water tanks, never mind. You asked the question. Okay. Thank you, good night. Discuss, vote, award of contract for Widows Walk Clubhouse Kitchen Equipment. Ian Kelly, I don't, let me see. This is Ian?
Yes. I'm his doppelganger.
Oh, good. Right, Nancy?
So as we've touched on several times tonight, the Widows Walk Clubhouse Improvement Project is moving along quite quickly. And one of the things that we have to deal with is the kitchen equipment. So we're not replacing all of the equipment as was mentioned in the executive action request you have in front of you. We're only replacing some of the kitchen equipment. So for those of you at home, we're keeping the stove, prep sinks, slicers, hand sinks, a six-burner range, and griddle, exhaust hood, work tables, wall shelves. So it's not a full sale, clean it all out. Most of the equipment that was in there was original since 1997, so we've only been piecemealing it as we went along. The new equipment that we're looking at purchasing includes a new walk-in cooler, three different freezers, pizza prep refrigerator, a fryer, heat lamps, dishwashers, hand sinks, back bar cabinet, a glass washer, and ice bin, those types of things. The, we were using the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative for our procurement. We did reach out to the three different vendors that are on that contract. One could not install, they could only deliver, so they did not offer a bid. The other two, Stafford Smith and Trimark, both offered bids. Trimark was the lower, lowest bidder, and they offered two options. One was a 12 to 14 weekly time, the other was a 9 to 10 weekly time. So we opted for the 9 to 10 weekly time. And that's what's before you tonight. It's $75,111.17. Just to give you an idea of how tight they were, the other quotes were $77,000 and $78,000. So they're all within a very close range of one another. And the reason we wanted to come quickly is so that we can get the equipment in while some of the wall, some of the openings of the building are still large enough for that equipment to get in.
All right, questions? Go ahead. Ms. Canfield?
How, do they have any concerns about delivery times?[1726.95]
Do, how, do they have any concerns about delivery times? I know that there's a lot of equipment that's just backlog.
That's why we chose the Perloc option, which is just one of the name brands of a lot of the equipment that's in there because its lead time was approximately three to five weeks faster.
Okay.
And it's problematic for the project if we can't get that equipment in there before they close up, you know, bring all the openings down to the final size.
Great. Yeah, that's a big deal. Good to know we're keeping the keg cooler.
Yeah, so are we, when are we doing the bid to see who wants to lease the restaurant? And how do we know we're designing it the way that the guy that wants to do Mexican in there does?
Well, it's going to be designed as a basic kitchen. So we won't do the bids, probably we'll do those October, November when it's getting about done so they can commit a little kitchen, see what's there and be ready to spread. So we'll do it for the fall.
So who's designing the kitchen? Is it in the same spot? The kitchen?
It's just, it's bigger and better laid out.
Move around a little more room.
So the designer that did the specs had that experience to get the-
He's definitely still using ground.
Yeah, they also worked with Trimark. Trimark also helped us with the design of it, but they were also one of the bidders.
Okay. Good. Yeah, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be a much bigger, newer place, so I'm hoping we can, you know, get a-
It's set up for pub food, not for fine dining. Because that's more of what you would expect if you're catering to tournaments or however you're going to work that space with the golf course in mind.
Right. How does it compare to the senior center kitchen, which is very, very nice?
The senior center kitchen wasn't bid out separately, it was part of the general contract. We actually culled this out to try to keep the cost down. So we have budgeted for FFNE and kitchen equipment, $145,000, so this will take about half of that. And that leaves us the balance for the few pieces that they need for the pro shop and then for the furniture and the actual restaurant.
I don't think the apartment is going to be similar. It's going to have stalls, it's going to have walk-ins, it's going to have a dishwasher set and something like that. I don't think it's quite set up the exact same.
I didn't mean set up, but the quality of it and the, the room, because my recollection of the golf club kitchen was dreadful, as I recall.
I think that was a fair recollection.
It's tiny.
Yeah. I don't know how they worked in there, to be honest with you.
This is, this is still all financed through the enterprise fund, right?
Yes.
And then the revenue will go there as well?
As it should.
So right now, we, we have no rental income because the lease has expired and we haven't renewed, we haven't put it back out to bid. And we're still probably going to close the year, 600,000 plus for revenue. And the project doesn't seem to be affecting people's golfing habits currently, which is wonderful. It's amazing.
Well, you got the caterer out there with the tent providing food?
I think the new online system and the, and Ian's approaches have really worked well.
But so somebody's going to come in, I imagine, you know, typically when you rent a restaurant space, you don't get, it's not a turnkey operation, so.
Will on some equipment, the, whoever the operators will be responsible for it?
Well, we're buying tables, right? And we're building out the bar and we're, we're doing most of the-
We're doing most of it, so we'll own most of it. We have space. As part of the RFP, there'll be a time when you construct a bid reveal and see the space and get it and see what's there.
And that's October with an open date.
When it's done enough, October, November, yeah, when we have something to show.
Yeah.
And then we'll do the bidding ready for March, April, when the golf course is open.
Yeah. Great.
Any other questions? Do we have a number?
Mm-hmm.
The motion?
Yep.
I'm sorry. I'm on the screen. Yeah, we got it set. Okay. Very good. Would someone like to make a motion?
Move toward a contract to award, move.
Sorry.
Move forward a contract to Trimark United, east of Boston, Mass. Is this in English?
I was really tired when I wrote that suggested motion. That's my excuse.
For kitchen equipment for Widows Walk Clubhouse in the amount of $75,111.17. That's the important part, right?
Second. Second by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ian. The next is the appointment of a temporary registrar on the recommendation of the Board of Registarians. This comes from our town clerk and this relates to the registrars are our election officials. So we had a resignation of Conley Ford, a Republican, and we have both Republican and Democratic registrars. As registrar, as registrar, there's a vacancy on the board. There is a masked general law attached letter. The remaining members of the Board of Registarians voted to recommend Mary Ford to the position as a temporary registrar for the remainder of the term, which expires in 2022. And they are respectfully asking that the select board vote to appoint her.
Move to appoint Mary Ford as a temporary registrar for the Board of Registarians for a term that expires in 2022.
Motion by Mr. Vannani. Second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries. Thank you. Discuss vote, Davis Parking Lot 2021 License Renewal.
This is the parking lot over in Hummerock, right?
I was thinking that.
Yeah, I was just going to, where is that exactly?
I think we do this every year, correct?
Yeah, people have, because they didn't do it last year.
The parking lot wasn't open at all? Oh.
It was cold.
So we don't do it every year, but we should.
It's due to-
Okay. Pandemic, things got pandemic. Okay.
Residents will be happy to see it.
Yeah, it's, it's all closed right now. There's ropes across. Want a motion?
Yes, please.
Move the Board of Selectmen approval to renew the parking lot license to Mark A. Davis, also known as JPD Realty Trust, for the 2021 season.
Second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, motion carries. And next, discuss vote, board and committee appointments, specifically the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee.
Yeah, there was no motion in favor, but I have written one on this.
Yes, please.
Okay. Move to appoint Jim Sixtiger as a diversity, equity and inclusion committee for a term to marry a successful zero in inclusion of the program, which is not on my children's program. That's going to be-
So moved.
Second by?
Second.
Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries. Welcome to Mr. Sixtiger to our diversity committee. Thank you for applying. Next is to liaison reports. Anyone have one?
Just quick.
Sure.
The, I just want to say that I've gotten, and I'm sure you guys too, Council on Aging Senior Center, more people came up to me over this holiday weekend telling me how they're enjoying the programming, the building's spectacular, they're there three times a week. It's, I mean, a lot of people. So I just wanted to let everybody know that the programming is up and running and you can check the website and everyone's having a really good time with that. So Tony and I are going to take a zumba together, I think. And then Charter Review is actually going to meet for the first time ever in person on Monday night. And the goal, it remains that we'll have something to, to discuss at the next, at the April town meeting. So that-
Not exactly true.
Pardon me?
They met before. We met before. The Charter?